Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Montpelier City Council. The first item of business is to review the agenda, which I thought I had in front of me, but it seems to have been misplaced. Okay, so I know there are some who we've... Well, one of the items on discussion is city manager review, which is scheduled for the end of the meeting. I'm going to suggest that we try and reschedule that, but I know there's been some division that we may have a scheduling challenge. So maybe we start... Well, first, we can suggest that and see what people think.
We need to do something by March 1st, right? The current contract says you have to do something. And Bill, you said we were out.
So up here next week.
I'm not hearing people. I'm sorry. I don't know if it's the mics or where they're at.
Okay, we can do the scheduling at the end of the meeting, even if we're not...
Okay, so we're all right with putting that one off? Okay.
As long as we can all find...
I'm sure we can find a time.
Sure. Late it is, definitely.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, if not, without objection, we'll consider the agenda approved. Next item is general business and appearances. It's an opportunity for anyone who's here on something that's not on our agenda to raise that. Okay? If we get to something that you are interested in, you may have a call in, just raise your hand. I'd love to hear from you. Okay, consent agenda, if you'd like to move it through.
I guess we'll need to poll the minutes because there's apparently a typo on it that I honestly can't find, so we'll figure it out for next time.
Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda, less item A.
Second. Any discussion? Here none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, conservation commission. We have actually two groups that we need to appoint, new members too, conservation commission and the planning commission. Rosie, I know you had emailed me, and I can't remember which one you said...
I'm going to recuse myself from conservation commission because one of the applicants serves above me and I'm required to involve the agency.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take that one up first. Conservation commission appointments, and we are fortunate to have lots, well, challenging for us, but fortunate, I guess, for the city, lots of great applicants. So anyone want... And so we typically would hear from people who have expressed an interest. So if you're one of those people, just go up to the mic, if you would, and introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in serving on the conservation commission. Welcome.
Hi. Pull that down. Okay. I don't have to lean over it. Okay. Hi, I'm Brenna Toman. We met last year. I've been an alternate on the commission since October 2016, and I'm really excited that there's four-year positions opening up, so that's what I'm applying for. I guess I'm really excited to continue some of the work that I've started on the commission. One of those is the social media and outreach with the commission. We didn't have a Facebook or anything, so I started that up. Really like to keep that going and broaden the scope of that. Also, I've been working on restarting the conservation fund, which is that little pool of money that we've got sitting on, and starting to plan for the 2018 BioBlitz with the Nature Center. So that's what I'm looking forward to, and that's it. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Do you have any other applicants? Yes?
Hello.
Hi.
A little bit short for me.
Maybe tilt it up and help a little.
Tilt it up.
Yeah, that should do it.
You can sit.
My name's Nick Giannetti. We also met last year in October. I serve as an alternate role currently on the conservation commission, but I was also excited to see a full-time position upper appointment because, as Brenna was alluding to, you've done a lot of great things in the past year, and I feel like the conservation commission is really rolling now because we have a lot of new faces and a lot of participation. One of the projects that I'm heading is kind of like our stormwater project and working with the Friends of the Waduski and the Public Works Department to hopefully complete some of those items on the stormwater master plan that were identified by Stone Environmental. So we've been reaching out to a few private property owners, so hopefully we can do some direct implementation, like building some rain gardens and also doing some outreach to some of the local folks to hopefully maybe take some of that water out of our combined sewer system. But yeah, that's it.
Any questions for Nick? Forgot to ask that about Brenna as well. No? Okay, thank you, Nick. Okay, who's next? Yes.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Katie Michaels. I am a new member of the Montpelier community. I moved here in September, and I'm interested in serving on the conservation commission in large part to get to know this place better and to be a more active member and to be able to give back to Montpelier. And I feel like getting to know the natural areas here has helped me make a home here, so I'd love to be part of them and help make them beautiful. And I have a... I work for the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, so I have a professional interest in land use. And prior to that, I worked for the High Meadows Fund, where I had a lot of experience working in land use resilience, so I would bring those experiences to the role. And I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but I'm also a good friend of Shelby Perry, who I know has applied to the conservation commission, and I just wanted to put a pitch in for her as well. She is an incredible naturalist, and she's the sort of person who you take a hike with her, and it's like a three-hour hike to go two miles because she's just very curious about all the things she sees. So I just wanted to speak on her behalf as well.
Well, glad you did. Thank you. Okay, who is next?
Hi, I'm Jamie Bates, and so I've been participating as a member of the public for the Montpelier Conservation Commission, and I first heard about it from Nick and Brenna. And I was just curious to know about the commission, and after going to those meetings, I realized it was something that I really wanted to be a part of. I have been working on a logo for Montpelier Conservation Commission because, as you... As was mentioned before, it's easier and I'm used to public speaking a whole lot. So with the BioBlitz coming up, we thought it would be a good opportunity to have a logo out there for the Montpelier Conservation Commission. But I also have a lot of other interests within nature and projecting and conserving what Montpelier has to offer. So I'm just really excited to possibly participate in the Montpelier Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Jamie.
I'm... I'm Glenny Sewell. You all saw me here, I believe, more than a year ago, so applying for the alternate. And to be very honest, a lot more time has opened up on my hands because at the time I went in as an alternate, time closed in around me with other institutions. Right now, I'm just with Norwich at the moment, and I do a little work at CCB, but I'm not with Niki anymore. I don't mind if it's one of the seats or an alternate, to be very honest. I still want to keep my time in and push to stay on, at least stay on that commission until I can give a great deal more time of myself. It's one of those things where I want to do something, and if the time... Since the time has opened up, I still want to be able to give it to someone. I don't like time sitting open, doing absolutely nothing, twiddling my thumbs and watching YouTube. That's not happening. So it can be Norwich and then the conservation commission, however it goes.
Thank you, Glenny. Anyone else?
My name's Michael Lazorcheck. Submitted the cover letter, which explains my background of natural resources, attorney work, served on a number of land trusts, ran a nonprofit in the western states, been a wildland firefighter. So public interest is what I'm excited about, and anything I can contribute or answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else? Okay, do we have much to go to executive session to discuss these applications?
So moved.
Second. Everyone please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be back shortly.
Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, I work with affordable housing developers. So I have a sense of, you know, some of the development challenges. You know, I reviewed the French Blanc project that's going in above Obashan's this summer. So I bring that expertise as well. And I'm just interested in, you know, technical aspects of how you can continue to create vibrant, maintain and create vibrant communities. And I have a four-year-old daughter who'll be starting kindergarten soon. So I'm definitely invested in the long-term viability and success of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. I'm Stephanie Smith. I live over on Charles Street. I'm happy to be in front of you once again when there are actual vacancies on the Planning Commission. So I'm hopeful that I'll be appointed this round. I've been, I've been attending the Planning Commission meetings, the last several of them, and it's been a really good opportunity to see what the Planning Commission is doing and get a better sense of what the, what the plan is going forward for the next couple of years. And I'm, and to see how the committee works and how they function. So that's, that's been really good. I'm particularly excited about a new city plan and starting to put that together. I'm, I used to work at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, and I worked with other municipalities to develop their plans. And I'd like to have a more active role in the place where I live in, in that process. And I'm, I have a master's degree in planning. I'm a planner. I work for the state of Vermont. I have a lot of experience in planning, and I'm excited to bring that to the table in the places that I live. So, thank you guys for considering me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I'm Paul Carnahan. I live on Saban Street. Really enjoy living in Montpelier and want to see it continue as a great, great community to, to raise families or to live as, as individuals. And I'd like to be on the Planning Commission to, to help move that forward. I don't see any big changes. I think, I'm interested in working on the, the master plan. I think the master plan could use a lot of focus. Right now, it's a very unwieldy document. And I think that I could bring some, some, some work to that to, to try to focus it a little bit on exactly what the, the priorities of the, of the committee, of the commission and the community are. And I'd like to, you know, bring some, some balance to the, to the community in terms of growth and preserving the things that we like about, about Montpelier. I think there's a lot of things that, that are exciting about Montpelier that we can move, move forward. I've been involved in the Montpelier Alive Downtown Committee, Design Committee for, for a while. And I think we've done a lot of exciting things to, to move Montpelier forward in that regard, and I'd like to continue on the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else? Okay, do you have a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
If they would please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Turn it again.
It's all right.
Okay. Okay, do we motion to come back into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, end.
I guess I would just observe that this was a really tough decision, and for those very well-qualified people who we don't appoint, there may be some opportunities coming up very soon. So depending on how the charter change goes, we'll determine that timing. But, right, so we, I would move that we appoint Stephanie Smith and Ariane Kassam to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Is there a discussion? If none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Bill, could you just describe that charter change that I think it'd be helpful for people to know that we are, you have made a charter change that's relevant to the people who have both applied and been appointed to the Planning Commission?
One of the, the problems we have with our current setup with both the Design Development Review Board and the Planning Commission is that the term lengths are specified but not the actual terms. If somebody leaves midterm, you can't fill out an existing term. You have to appoint someone new for the whole three years or two years. So we proposed a charter change that appoints all of the Planning Commissioners, I believe, on May 1st and all of the DR people on October 1st. And then they have set terms. And if somebody leaves in the middle, then we just fill out the unexpired term. So if that passes and is in effect by May 1st, we'll probably have to reappoint all seven Planning Commissioner men or members, you know, four-to-two-year terms and three-to-one-year terms presumably. So just FYI, there could be, you know, some existing members may choose to step down at that time. There could be another process.
And we, again, we really appreciate everyone applying, and we want you to reach out and attend and participate. Every committee is open, commissions likewise, are open to having you participate, even if you can't vote on certain things.
Justin.
I would also add, as Mrs. Smith's acceptance is evidence of persistence pays off here. And we really certainly consider people's willingness to start attending meetings beforehand to be involved and get brought up to speed prior to appointments. Additionally, at least one member of, that is still on the Planning Commission, I know, has expressed interest in getting through our zoning and master plan process and then will potentially be stepping away. So stay tuned. May, midsummer, August probably latest, there'll be several new seats opening up on this commission.
And again, thanks for everyone who's both, well, everyone who's applied and everyone who's serving on the commission. Thank you. Okay, so we will be moving all, oh, we need to vote. We had, no, I thought we-
We voted. We voted this time.
All right. Item seven on our agenda, dog ordinance, second reading.
I'm Sue Allen. I'm the Assistant City Manager. Do we want to go around and just-
Bob Allen's, I'm the Health Officer and Fire Chief.
I'm Neil Martel. I'm the Captain.
Yvonne Burr, Director of the Montpelier Community Justice Center.
Welcome, everyone.
And I'll just briefly remind you that this is second reading of an ordinance that you've already looked at once. It was requested that the first reading be visited by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns to assure that it was a civil process and not a criminal process, and to tighten the language, to look around at what other communities had done. So that's what the delay has been to bring you a second reading. This doesn't change much, other than tighten up what we had a little bit and clarify things. It does the highlights. It requires that dogs be on a leash on a city street, a sidewalk, or a recreation path. It clarifies what constitutes running at large. It tightens some of the definitions. The league did that. For example, dangerous dog and who constitutes an owner of a dog, to include dog sitters, for example. It makes it clear that this is a civilian offense, and it encourages violators to participate in the Montpelier Community Justice Center process. If you want to appeal, there is an appeals process through the Judicial Bureau, and it spells that out. It also reconstitutes the Animal Control Committee, which just hadn't been meeting and needs to be reappointed, and at some point, we'll bring that back to the council for approval. They will handle the most serious offenses under this, and it spells out the fines. So we're here to take any questions you have as you consider second reading.
Okay. Dennis, welcome. Do you want to go, are you, go ahead and make some comment?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay, firstly, I just wanted to tell you, all of you, that there's a real improvement to this ordinance, especially the, you know, calculation of offenses and defining violations as civil offenses. So that's really great. I, you know, I, I did email all of you, trying to argue the point that this is really a completely different document from the document that was read on August 23rd. So it's not, you know, it's, it's really a first read. I would argue that this is a first reading of a document that is, you know, 11 pages as opposed to five. It has, what, eight new definitions. There's a lot, there's a lot that's different in it, and I would, and it's complicated, it's confusing in a lot of, a lot of places. And I would argue that this needs to be a first reading and allow people who are concerned with this issue and concerned with this, the ordinance, have, be able to comment and have a second reading on this. So.
Other comments? I'm sorry, you?
So that's what, so that's what I would like to ask. Is that, is that possible at all?
Why don't we go ahead and, we're going to go through this and see what people, and then we'll make a decision on that.
Okay.
Once we finish tonight, or finish this.
We're going to go through it page by page, then?
No, but we'll hear comments from you, and then the staff, and the council members will make all those questions, and then I think-
Okay.
At the end of our discussion, we'll-
I also have, you know, some changes, not terribly significant, that I'd like to pass out, and so we, so when I go through this, you could look at-
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
I'm all alone today. Everybody's sick.
Can understand, having now, yeah, been through it. I have my sympathy. Thank you.
So one of the first things that I would like to talk about is the, in the running at large category. We would like that to be, we, a number of people would like to include, would like to exempt the area where, a public area where dogs are allowed to be off-leash. The bike and recreation path has really caused a lot of confusion. I have four or five emails asking, what does that mean? What is, how, how do you define bike recreation path?
Is that the one on page eight, about running at large? Is that where that starts? Is it, it's eight, 207?
And Donna, just as a process question-
No, eight is nuisance.
You're working off the red, purple, green line version.
Yes, the, the version that we're, that's-
Running at large is 12.
It's number 12.
Page four.
So my, our suggestion is on 12B, clearly under the verbal or nonverbal control inside of the owner who has a leash in their possession, or in a public space where dogs are permitted to be off-leash. And if, I mean, we have, we said that we were going to, this was not going, I don't know what I want to say here. But that's, that's the way Hubbard Park is at this point, under their Code of Conduct. So I'd like to propose that change.
I'm sorry, so, there's a part, it's hard to follow because it's a double negative. Running at large, the dog off the premises and not clearly under the verbal-
And not on a leash, if on a city street sidewalk-
Not on a city street, so-
Or bike recreation path.
Not, not on a city street.
Right.
So I guess that means, on a city street, they're-
They need a leash.
They need a leash, okay.
I, I hear you, though, on the confusing part about like if they, if you're on a bike or recreation path, do you need a leash?
It says has to be on a leash, it said here.
The intent was yes. As I understand the confusion is that they, some people think paths in Hubbard Park and other places are also recreation paths. There's some confusion as to what, what that means. And so there was some, there was actually some question about simply making clear Maryland mode, it's in some language about this definition doesn't apply to Hubbard Park.
But also, I don't know whether you saw, also you had an email from John Apple, Ashley Apple.
He was also supporting the same language, the Maryland.
Right. And I, probably nobody got to see it. I guess it came out early afternoon.
It came out yesterday.
I mean, however you wanted to find it, that this definition shall not apply to Hubbard Park where dogs are allowed to be off-leash, if in compliance with the Hubbard Park Canine Code of Conduct.
Are we going to have discussion or want to keep?
Well, how many, how many proposals are you, you have? I'm going to think about how we're going to manage this process.
There's actually, I have a lot. I'd like to, I want to, this is a, this is one that's very prominent, because a lot of people have talked about this. And I have also the fines, I believe. People have also been concerned about how high the fines are. So I'd like to talk about that. And the appeal process, which is not really very clearly spelled out in this.
Okay. So why don't we just start working, throw right through those? Justin.
Mr. Mary, I would just comment that Mrs. Riggle certainly has taken opportunity to speak to us multiple times, both prior and during first reading, so, well, I'm welcome to engage in this process. The document in front of us, I think, is a reflection of previous attempts to run this through Leagues of Cities and Towns and come up with a document that will ensure that our community is well-served by a reasonable level of enforcement for dogs and, I guess, specifically dogs. So I guess I would just remind council that we've, we have been through this, and this is our best attempt at meeting everyone's needs. And while we understand that certain individuals in the community may not want to see any level of leash enforcement or fines associated with that, I think we're trying to find a balance that serves everyone here.
Okay, thanks for that reminder. Okay, so Rosie, did you have a suggestion?
Well, I don't mind clarifying that this definition, that the park commission's policies apply in Hubbard Park and not this definition. I don't want to go so far as to put in our regulation that what the park commission's regulations are, because those could potentially change in the future-
Sure.
And I don't want to have those in regulation.
Exactly. That's, that's why I suggested a public space where dogs are permitted off-leash.
So I don't, I can understand how it would be confusing to somebody, and I don't mind making a minor clarification like that. I just don't want to go as far as to say anything further about whether or not they're required to be leash.
Any objection to that change?
That's great.
Okay, Dennis, do you want to?
Okay, the other, under the authority in this new document, I think you need to include 29 DSA 1974, 1974A, which deals with, you know, appeals from the Judicial Bureau.
I'm sorry, before we go on, you asked if there was any objection to that part. I, I am a little wary about striking the part, when not on a city street sidewalk.
So I didn't have specifics, I wasn't striking that.
I don't think there was any suggestion about that.
Okay.
I think, the way I interpreted Councilmember Kruger's comment was that the language that was suggested would say something like, this definition shall not be applied to Hubbard Park where, if dogs are in compliance with Hubbard Park Canine Code of Conduct as promulgated. So it doesn't say where they're allowed to be off-leash, just as if they're consistent with the code of conduct.
Yeah, yeah. Because then if they're out of compliance, it's applicable.
So, so we're not necessarily-
So we're adopting the code of conduct by reference, and if they change that, then we can change.
Okay, okay, we're staying that. We're just adding. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so on to the monitored penalties. They are, I was just, they're extremely high, and if you look at, like, the dog license penalties, they're sort of outrageous. And it seems to me that-
Are you looking at page, is this page eight, eight of the-
Or licensing, is that right?
Licensing.
Eight, dash, 204 for licensing.
The second warning is 100, the third is two, fourth is 500.
For the licensing?
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I, so I would like to just offer this, that failure to license fees being set so high are likely to discourage compliance. And I'm asking, why don't we try to incentivize compliance? License fees could be discounted in recognition of practices that demonstrate responsible ownership. In no case will a discount bring the cost of the license below a base established. Discounts could be given for, and this is important because all of this is about, you know, education and communication. So a discount could be given for completion for an AKC Canine Hood Citizen course, proof of an obedience title awarded by an organization, permanent identification of the dog by microchip, membership in an obedience pub, multiple-year licenses tied to a three-year vaccination. It's not, now a vaccination for three years after their initial month. So, I think that these kinds of things that, you know, that distinguish between responsible and irresponsible pet owners, and that's what we want to create. We don't need to beat people up. So for the dog licensing thing, I would suggest something that really encourages people to participate and to be better, more responsible owners.
Justin? I just would ask the city clerk, what is the state level of dog licensing? We're plus five on that, so.
Yeah, it's $10 for plus five on that.
Yeah, it's ten dollars for plus five on that and included in the budget was to add another three.
It's eighteen, so you might want to do that in this.
But this is about like, you know, penalties for not licensing. And you also might want to give a break to financial staff people for license, because it's everybody's benefit to have a dog licensed microchip.
Okay, what's, what else do you have?
Okay. So, let me go on to the, let me go on to the enforcement, which is eight, two oh six. Let me get, this, let's go back to the dangerous, the definition for dangerous, which is two, it is eight oh two, eight, two oh two, number two. Dangerous shall mean any dog regardless of breed, breeding, type, or appearance. I don't know why that was taken out, because that's because we want to have, we don't want to have breed-specific laws and that's a thing that has been, you know, we've been, something that, that various community states are doing, not to have, not to make any kind of breed distinction. So, so, dangerous, then it inflicts a, a serious injury on or kills a domestic animal. And I would say that we use the definition instead of serious injury on severe injury, which is, which is used and it has a specific definition for it. And it was, it was in the original and the first, in our, in the ordinance that's in effect now. Because I think this is, this becomes, too subjective. It's better to have a very distinct, a very distinct, and I can give you this to this now, too, for the dangerous.
Are you under the definition for dangerous?
Mm-hmm.
Which is number ten?
Mm-hmm.
Six?
Dangerous is two, potentially dangerous is ten.
Yeah, number two.
Eight, two oh two, eight, two oh two, number two.
The definition is ten. Dangerous is not eight, dangerous is-
I'm sorry, so Dennis, where are, what are you looking, where are we here?
Well, I'm looking at eight, I think it's on, what it is.
Eight, dash, two, zero-
Eight, two oh two, and it's number two. Dangerous shall mean any dog, regardless of breed, breeding type, or appearance, who, when, when on provoke, inflicts a, I would say, severe injury, serious injury on or kills a domestic animal or inflicts an injury on a person which requires medical intention or, or C, inflicts serious, severe injury on or kills a human being. Severe injury meaning any physical injury to a human being that results in muscle, muscle tears or disfiguring lacerations or requires multiple sutures or corrective cosmetic surgery. That's used in Florida, California, Washington, North Carolina, Maryland, Pennsylvania. Association of Pet Dog Owners, that, something that is, has been thought to be a better definition of serious inju, of, of serious injury. Okay.
What's next, what do you?
All right, continuing on, under these definitions shall not apply if the dog was protecting or defending itself, was in reaction to the disease, please include disease, pain, or an injury, protecting itself, its offspring, another domestic animal, or a person or protecting its owner's property from attack or assault, et cetera, et cetera, or the dog was engaged in, the person attacked, threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, and then please add, or has in the past been observed or reported to have tormented, abused, or assaulted the dog or was committing or attempting to commit a crime. I don't know if this is useful, is this useful at all?
Well, I guess-
I feel like I should, I can give this to you in writing.
It would be more helpful in writing, for sure. It's hard to follow when you're reading it.
This is what you've given us, right?
Those were some concerns I had, it's not, we're not going through it one by one there.
But, I guess what I'm, I, I mean, you're happy, I'm happy to have you present these and then what I'm going to say, any city council wants to propose that we make these changes, feel free to do that. I mean, I'm not, we're not going to take a vote on every one of your proposals, but if somebody wants to make a motion either now and while you're raising or at the end, we'll do that. But I, I'm just mostly cognizant of the time that Justin says, well, not just tonight, but also that has gone into this ordinance, the amount of editing and discussion. And, and frankly, just the, the level of work we have to do tonight. So, I just want to get through this in a reasonable, give you an opportunity to present your concerns, but also to do that in an expeditious way.
Okay, well, then the enforcement, I think-
Dennis, just to reassure you, if, we've done a lot of wordsmithing with the committee, went to the league for more, and if we find over time, really, in a month, two months, we can go back and do edits, we can do changes. So, we don't have some language exactly the way you want it to be, it doesn't mean we can't get it there.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, under the enforcement, this is the question I have, is any violation of the ordinance shall be a civil matter which may be enforced in Vermont Judicial Bureau or in Washington County Superior Court at the election of the chief of police or enforcement officer. What does that mean? How does that work?
So, by moving this to a civil venue, that we would issue a, what is known as a municipal, municipal civil violation for these type of infractions.
Right.
We could, you would be given a, what is known as a summons, it's not a criminal, it's a civil ticket to appear. It's very similar venue to what a, what a traffic ticket is.
Right, exactly.
It's, it's heard by a hearing officer.
Right.
Hearing officer would hear the dog owner's side of the story and a law enforcement officer, representative-
The hearing officer would be the hearing officer at the judicial bureau?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then who, and then the police officer or the enforcement officer, is there like the, like the?
Yeah, it's the same as with what we do with municipal, with traffic tickets we present. If I was the issuing officer, I would go, if it was another officer, it would probably be that officer.
Right.
They would present the facts of what they knew to constitute a violation. The hearing officer would hear from both sides and make a finding.
Okay, but what does this mean, or the, at the election, at the election of the chief of police or enforcement officer, in addition to-
Means they may choose not to bring it to court.
Right, right. So, so, the thought process that we put into this is-
What's the, yeah.
Is being, wanting to be a restorative community and utilizing Yvonne's resources, our first attempt would be to say to the dog owner, are you willing to participate in the restorative process?
Uh-huh.
If they are, that would be the first mechanism that we would use. They would have that choice. If they said, no, I don't want to, then the fallback would be, we would issue this municipal civil violation ticket and they could go before a hearing officer and state, you know, their reasons why they-
Or they could just pay the waiver fine.
Or they could pay the waiver fine, mail it in and be-
All right, so, so you would, so, all right, so the, the enforcement officer would first ask if you wanted to go through a restorative justice process.
Right.
But, and both people, both the transgressor and the injured party would have to agree to that, correct?
Well, in particular, I mean, we're dealing with the dog owner, so, I mean, that dog owner would have to be willing to participate in it.
As, and the injured party? If there is an injured party?
I mean, that would be a, be a part of the fulfillment of the process of the difficult restorative processes that the victim would have input in that process.
Well, if there's no victim-
They have the opportunity, they don't, there's nothing to compel, or no reason to compel an affected person to participate, but we always invite them to, if you want to.
But what if there's no victim? If the dog, if the dog's running at large?
The, the person, if the person-
Dogs unlicensed, how do you, or?
If the person wants to participate in a restorative process, they would meet with our restorative justice panel, have the conversation, and then together create a, an agreement about how to make things better.
Okay, so, if, you would do that with the injured person or if there is no injured person?
Either way.
Either way, you would do that? Is restitution part of that?
If, if there is restitution, if there have been material damages, then in order to complete the restorative process, the dog owner would need to take care of those financial damages as was talked about in the agreement.
Okay, but they don't, but nobody has to go through that process if they don't want to?
No, you can pay your fine.
Okay, so that's not very clear here.
They can contest it, or they can-
You can contest, they can have a hearing officer, you can pay, you can just admit it, pay the fine, you can pay the waiver fine and not contest it at all, or you can go to restorative justice. Is there, is, does restorative justice have, do you work on, do you, does restorative justice work on civil cases?
It does now.
Since when?
Since the last iteration of the document.
Dennis, I'm going to jump in because I, I know you need to get these answered, but I, we're just not going to be able to use the entire city council in public time to get questions.
So, how should we, how should we go through this? I have also questions that people have sent to me, asking, you know, asking the answer.
I feel like we're being filibustered, I mean, this process, I know there's been a-
I feel like this is a memo.
Because I know that this has been a public process, this has been, there's been, I know I started, I was involved in this years ago and I know that there's been years since then of work that's gone into this ordinance, so-
Ruining my life.
Well, we don't want that, but we also want to make sure we don't, that we adjourn before midnight tonight.
So, can we, can, can we make this a first reading and then have a second reading?
Well, what, how many amendments are you proposing? How many more? I thought there were just a handful, but it sounds like there's more than that.
Well, no, there's, there's some more, and thank you, Donna, for that, because we, you know, like, language then, I'll just, we'll just remove. But there's some, no.
So, how many proposed changes are you, do you have for us tonight?
Okay, so, there's the judicial, there's the judicial bureau, the appeal process within the judicial bureau, there's the difference between Animal Control Committee and the city council. So, in this document, they seem to be overlapping and it's not clear whose job is what. I mean, my understanding would be that the Animal Control Committee is a legislative body that the city council has created. Is that correct? Is that what that would be?
Yes, with some definition.
Was I judicial through the ordinance?
Yeah.
Some members on the committee are prescribed.
We know that, right, we know that. But, so they have, so that is in fact standing, that is like the legislative body. Like in statute law, that would be the legislative body, the Animal Control Committee, which is being made from the, the city council is creating an Animal Control Committee. So, they have like a magisterial role, is that correct?
I don't quite know how to answer that.
Okay.
So, Dennis, what I'm going to ask you to do is, is clearly and succinctly as you can make suggestions to the council as to what changes you would like on the ordinance, we will consider those and then we need to make a decision about the proposal before us. So, I'm going to give you, you know, another five, 10 minutes and if you could do that and then we're going to need to make a vote on the proposal. This is not a new issue, this has been around for years, but we need to make decisions and move on.
This is all very new stuff here, that we have, we haven't considered the, you know, the, the result of these new, of these new conditions, these new ordinances.
With all due respect, actually, these were presented three weeks ago.
Yes.
And was postponed in part because of the hour and in part because of your request.
Right, so this is, right.
And most of the changes that were made were actually due to your request. I feel like a lot of the questions you're asking, we've gone through before. You wanted clarity about the civil procedure, which is really the only substantive change. I mean, I'm probably way out of bounds here as an administrative officer as opposed to a policy person, but I, I, we've had, you've, you've been actively involved and I don't understand, if you had this many comments, why you couldn't have sent them to us even yesterday. It would have been helpful, I think, so, I mean, it's, council will do what they want. But my two cents is one, someone who's been involved in this with you for a long period of time. I feel like we've tried to accommodate all of your concerns.
Thank you. They're not just my concerns.
I understand, but you voiced them.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to take the next five to 10 minutes and I'm going to ask you to-
All right, so I would like to-
Your comments within that.
So, I, I would like to see the appeal process spelled out in this.
Do you have a proposal for us?
That I can write it up, I suppose.
I think there is an appeal process.
And it's unclear how we make it, how, you know, how does it go to, how do you make an appeal to the Superior Court? If you don't want the hearing officers.
Presumably, we're then hearing to the rules and procedures of the court. However, same way you appeal a parking ticket, I don't know how that works, but there's clearly a process that that one's outside of the city's appeal process.
Okay, so duly noted that, that you don't take objection to the lack of clarity in the appeal process. Is that your concern?
Right, I take objection to the lack of clarity in the appeal process.
Okay.
For, and the fines, the fines are very, are way, way too high. In, say, like in Burlington, what they do, they get all the fines, the fines are the same for any violation, first, second, third offense. And they go from, the first, first one is like a hundred dollars with the waiver fee. You know, we're talking about four fifty, three hundred dollars and I don't know that really there's any basis for that. Is there?
Your concern, this is not a, we're not going to debate this, but I understand you're raising that concern. What else, what are your, what other issues do you have?
So, here's some questions from some other citizens. Rules for playing ball on the statehouse lawn, dog over field, I mean, is it like playing ball, high school fields? Is that what happens there? Parking in an owner's house, if the owners are at work, is that becoming, is the dog parked all the time? And inside an owner's house, owner's, owner, dog owner's house?
Or in an apartment building, a multi-unit building.
This is a public process, you won't raise concerns, we just can't, I'm just not going to do it all night. But if you have concerns that you want to raise, I want to provide you with that opportunity.
Well, I can't, I don't have a, I can't do it now, I can't do it in private, so, I give up.
Do we have anyone else who's here to talk about the dog ordinance? Okay, are there any other council questions, comments, anyone want to make a motion?
I just wonder if I need to formalize that change that we made, and make a motion on that, or? So, I really, Bill's language was good, I'd like to just use that, I don't remember what it was.
So, I'm taking the language proposed by Marilyn Mode and John, I can't see his last name. It's, and just taking out one little clause, it says, goes under section eight oh two, definition twelve. It would say, "This definition shall not apply to Hubbard Park where dogs are in compliance with the Hubbard Park Canine Code of Conduct as promulgated by the park's commission."
So, I move to insert that language, as was read by the city manager.
So, are you making a full motion to accept this with that amendment?
Oh, I was just making a motion to add that, I guess, I guess I could make a full motion to-
Why don't you go ahead, you don't- Why don't you go ahead, if you don't mind?
Okay. I move that the city council accept the, sorry, I'm not sure how to formulate this motion. What's that?
Pass second reading.
I move that the council pass the second reading and adopt the amendments to article two, the dog and animal control ordinance, as, with the addition, with the amendment, just-
Articulate.
Articulate.
I'll second it.
All right.
Can you also add the, in the authority, twenty-four BSA nineteen seventy-four A?
Um-
In the authority?
So, we're in discussion of that, in this process.
So, hold on just a second, Marilyn, so we've got, the motions are made, did you second? Okay, so now it's a discussion, if you wanna raise that as a question, I guess somebody can-
If you're, if you're adding some language, could you add to the authority for this twenty-four BSA nineteen seventy-four A?
As a council could, I don't, I mean, somebody could offer that if they want to.
I'm not comfortable doing that, because we've had this so thoroughly legally reviewed, and I don't really wanna make changes to that at this point.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
The only change you might wanna consider making is under the part about dog licenses, where it says it's five dollars above the state fee, we did pass a budget, well, we haven't passed it, assuming the budget passes, it assumes that it would be eight dollars above the state. So, we wanna amend that now.
Correct.
I'd make a motion to amend the pending motion to change the number five to eight as it relates to licensing fees.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Five to end.
Okay, so, first would be a motion on the, vote on the amendment, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then next would be the vote on the underlying ordinance, a motion to approve the ordinance, all in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Mayor, I have just a little more discussion or a comment, if that's all right, before we take our final vote.
Of course, yeah, sir.
I was again reminded, last week, when I was out walking neighborhoods, registering voters, how important people's pets are to them, almost every single house that you go to, either has a dog, or a cat, or hamster, people love their pets, there's no doubt about this, these are like members of our family, it's part of our community. This ordinance that we're about to approve is the culmination of many, many hours of city staff work, resident input, and the city council considering this, running it through the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and we know, as per the Valid Initiative last year, that our community is split pretty much down the middle on this, in terms of people who would prefer not to see dogs on a leash, so we do certainly take this very, very seriously. This document, for me, is the best possible balanced approach that we can have at this time, and I just wanna echo what Council Bate said, that, you know, if we get into this three months, and our police force is coming to us and saying, you know, we are just buried in tickets for this, or we have to take another look at this, or a public health officer is saying, you know, we've had this many incidents, that we may need to take public safety a little more seriously, I believe that future council will do that.
Any other comments? Done, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you all. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. Again, we're gonna take up item eight, Black Lives Matter resolution and a racism discussion. Donna, I think this was you-
I invite the superintendent and the high school principal to come forward. Yes, yes.
Yeah, welcome.
Thanks, ma'am.
This your first time here?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah. My wife is thrilled.
So, I did mail the proposed agenda sheet, I mean, and the proposed resolution, so you've seen it, and this is the attempt for city council to support the Montpelier school system, the Montpelier High School Racial Justice Alliance, and to support the Black Lives Matter flag, and that indeed we have to counter racism and any inequality that exists in our community, as well as our schools, and so I'd just like you to share your personal experiences, and what's been going on at the school, if you will.
Do you wanna start?
If you want.
Yeah, so, it's about a two-year process of us really waking up to the privilege that we live with in our school system, and the implicit biases and the systemic racism. I don't think there's any intention, malintention, in our, in our school district, but there was enough vigilance to recognizing the implicit biases and the things that are just a part of our everyday, the everyday, the way we're doing things on everyday basis, and thanks to some very brave, young leaders, courageous leaders, they've helped us recognize that we have growth to do, and so we have started that work, and it's a, it's a broad systemic work for us, we have several professional development, trainings for the adults, a lot of conversation with the students, and a concentration of effort this month in February, the most visible thing being the raising of the Black Lives Matter, or a Black Lives Matter flag, that the school board voted to do unanimously after a petition or request from the Racial Justice Alliance of our students.
Anyone wanna add, Mandy?
I'm sorry, could you address yourself?
Sorry, I'm Mike McCray, I'm the high school principal.
My name is Mandine Salabazie, and I'm a sophomore at a high school.
Welcome.
I'm Brian Rick, I'm the superintendent of schools, and to echo what Mike has been saying, it's really important that everyone understand that this work has been going on for two years, and that the raising of a flag is not the culmination of the work, it's not the beginning of the work, it's not the end of the work. Our continuous improvement plan has three big goals, one of them is personalization, one of them is proficiency, and the other one is equity, so this work that we are doing, honoring the experience of our black students, and admitting humbly that it's systematically different than the experience of our white students, and so this is an effort to admit that we need to do better at being an inclusive community. One of the things I say consistently, whether I'm talking to sophomores in high schools, in our high school, or, excuse me, kindergartners at our elementary school, is that my job is to work with all the adults in our building, to make sure that all of our students can feel safe and included, and this is just a way to honor the experience of our black students, and so, we are grateful that the city council is having this conversation, because we feel that we don't wanna do this alone, this is not work that is only to be undertaken by the schools, this is to be undertaken by our entire community, so we are very buoyed by this conversation taking place at the city council.
Thank you all for being here, I know, for me, it was just a wonderful thing to watch the emotion of the, that event, I know it wasn't a culmination, but for the community, it really was a centerpiece to, you know, a real statement to watch the emotion, and the way the community supported it, and then statewide, and then, of course, that even the national attention it's brought, has made me really proud to be part of Montpelier, to be a leader, and so, I, or not me, but being a community that's leading, and so thank you for taking that leadership role, and for the students for doing that, I think, you know, for me, it was just really eye-opening, and made me proud to be part of our community.
I'd like to add, too, that some of the criticisms of this act were that it was somehow anti-police, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of Montpelier Police, that they were actively involved in this discussion, the school resource officer, the chief, and supported it, and showed up in large numbers on the day of the flag, and I think stand with the students and the school in taking these actions, and in doing the work going forward, and so, how people outside of our community may view this is one thing, but we all know that people here, and the police officers here are on board.
And to add to the city manager's comments, we also were very clear and reached out to the Vermont State Police as well, they sent one officer for the ceremony as well, I've been in touch with Lieutenant Gary Scott, who I believe is the director of Community and Fair Policing in Vermont, and he was very, very laud, he lauded the effort of the students, and absolutely understood the nuanced work that we were doing, and also was not drawing any distinction that some members outside of this community, and the state specifically, were drawing, when it comes, when it comes to flying a Black Lives Matter flag, so, we were very thoughtful and intentional, Mike McCray and I, making sure that our law enforcement partners were aware of the context for what we were doing, and why this was happening at this time.
That round of applause really should go to the students that were involved in bringing this forward, and, but Dr. Rick, really, I applaud yours and the principal's acknowledgement of that, and moving that forward, and you, as the mayor stated, really serve as leaders for us, too, in this, in terms of helping to inspire us to stand together with our public schools, it's so important that our city do that. Also, I was particularly impressed in the letter that you wrote as parent, I received that before this resolution came to us, and specifically, how you acknowledged inherent bias, and that it's real, and we all have it, and to acknowledge that, I think, is huge, and then to start to take steps to address that, and correct that, so that we have a system that's equitable for everybody. I didn't know if your help, would help us better understand how we may, as a city, do better, to do that by sharing a couple specific examples of the changes that you're either considering or already have made to improve your system?
Yeah, thanks, I'll speak to that for a minute, one of the things is, is holding up a cultural competency lens to everything you're doing, and for us, that means instruction and our systems, and making sure that we're well-represented, with the different voices, and variety of voices, as much as we can, and making sure that we honor the student voice, and recognize that our students of color need to be at this table as much as possible, and also, just actual training, Kathy Johnson was here, I think, who's from CQ Strategies, and we attended the leadership team, the leaders, administration at the school, attended conferences with her, workshops with her, and we learned a great deal, and that is, was work for us, as personal leaders, and in our own work, and then also, you know, holding that lens up to our systems and our decisions that we make, and I would encourage anyone in a leadership position to consider learning from people who are doing this work on a regular basis as part of their career, there's a lot to be gained in that way, and then there's, for us, in the school system, it's not as applicable, but there's, there's just content for us, to understand ourselves, and to expose ourselves to, and then also for our students, it's just choices and content that we can make, it's a pretty fundamental decision.
One of the really shiny examples of the inclusivity of the statement by the Racial Justice Alliance, was that while it is a Black Lives Matter flag, the intent is to have all students feel included, and talking about implicit bias means talking about a lot of privilege, you know, I check a lot of boxes when it comes to privilege, I'm a white, able-bodied, cisgendered, heterosexual, Judeo-Christian male, in a position of power, there are not a lot of biases that are attached to me when I walk into a room, but that's not the experience of all of our students, it's probably not the experience of everybody in this room, and so, one day, in January, Monday the twenty-second, we had a workshop of professional development, it included people from Outright Vermont, talking about issues of sexual orientation and gender identity, it included people talking about disabilities, abilities and disabilities, ones that we can see and ones that we can't, we did have Kathy Johnson from CQ Strategies, and so, the goal is to have all students feel that they can come to us with whomever they are, whether it's a visible bias implicit that we have when they show up in our classrooms or not, and that they all feel safe and included, and so, our messaging has been around having conversations with families around what implicit bias and privilege is, and how, especially when Mike and I have had a lot of focus in these conversations, undressing ourselves, for lack of a better word, of the privilege that we come to the table with, and ensuring that people, like Mandy, are sitting at the right tables, and having the right conversations, and that we honor those experiences.
I'll just follow up on that, too, that on a parallel track, without knowing where the school was, the city leadership also did a four-hour workshop with Kathy Johnson at CQ Strategies about cultural competency earlier this winter, just recognizing the same thing, our community's changing, and we interact, whether it's police, fire, public works, ourselves in offices, our own staff, to try to, you know, raise our awareness of the same issues, fascinating that this, you know, they were, they were at the same place.
How did we get those workshops, not only for us as a council, but to the community, to really make them available to people? Kathy?
There you go, Kathy.
My self-intimate doctor's name, I'm calling Brian Shum.
Do you wanna just come up and introduce yourself, Kathy, if you don't mind?
We wanna record you, people hear you at home.
Thank you, my name's Kathy Johnson, and I am part of a cultural strategy, there's five of us, myself, Brian Shum, Tom Smith, Mino, and Paul Ture, so, we do have trainings that are gonna be, starting March thirteenth, that is on ORD, it's been our great pleasure to work with the Montpelier School, there are the Family Center of Washington County, that's also participating in that training, and Outright Vermont, this is a program we started in Burlington, in two thousand and ten, with the Community Economic Development Office, and in Burlington, close to sixty, fifteen, four, six organizations, kind of nonprofits, city departments have participated, all different aspects of looking at the ways, things that we don't even know we don't know, I mean, that's interesting, you ask what you could do, one thing, go on Netflix, and watch the movie Thirteen, about thirteen and nineteen, and if you're interested in Black Lives Matter, Thirteen tells you an amazing story, and I was over, we had Governor Zuckerman show that at the State House, and there was a man there at the end, who was like, I have a master's degree, I have a doctoral degree, how have I gone through our education system to this level, and I have never heard of this disproportionate situation of profiteering that looks like modernized slavery, again, Thirteen on Netflix, all kinds of things you don't know, that you don't know, and when we work together, we think about those ways that are often to buy and affect us, it brings us to a new place and it changes the conversation, so, thank you all the schools for making the conversation, thank you, the best, and there's a lot of us that wanna continue this conversation, Central Vermont showing up for racial justice, and other things that have been forcing, looking for conversation throughout our community, we had a hundred and twenty people in Central Vermont, and there's been twenty four, looking for conversations, and there's only one round that's starting up, they're not active, it's not for lack of things going on, as white people born in Vermont, you know, you've got to, born in Vermont or not, you know, whether we're Indian or Native folks, but there's a lot we don't know that we're familiar about, so, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Kathy.
I wonder if we can make some sort of a link with some of these events on the city website, to-
Sure, we'd be happy to.
-under a title, I mean, that, 'cause people see it, but they don't see it, do you know what I mean, so that would be good. Thank you.
Okay, done.
Something that happened Monday at Rotary, we had our regular annual speech contest, and there were Montpelier high school students who talked, and one chose the BLM flag raising, and behind it, and she gave this example, she says, "Sometimes when you talk about Black Lives Matter, people will say, 'All lives matter,' which is true," and she made this wonderful comparison, "If you had a neighborhood of twenty houses, and one is on fire, where are you gonna put your attention?" And when you put your attention on the house that's burning, everything you learn about that, you can hopefully apply to the other houses, so, it is very inclusive, isn't that an example? I just love it, I mean, it's a very inclusive approach.
Should've sprinkled it.
It's never exclusive. It's, I was just, it's just very touching, just very touching. Do we need the resolution read out loud?
No, I don't think so, I mean-
Okay.
I'd love to make a comment as well.
Sure, yeah.
So, in addition to raising the Black Lives Matter, I think one of the most impactful things for me, as a part of, so I'm a teacher at the high school, and so, one of the things that I found- that I found really moving, actually, was hearing from the very brave students of the Racial Justice Alliance, reflecting back to the teachers, various occasions, actually, what their experience has been like and how, really, bringing really specific examples as to how their experience has been different than the white students at the school. And so, that has gotten me thinking quite a bit about the city in general. I mean, obviously, if blacks and students of color at the school are having a systematically different experience at the school, then must they also, you know, obviously, they're having a different experience in our community as well. And how lucky, you know, the school is to have such great students who are willing to take that risk and call, you know, shine a light on those experiences. And one of the things that I would love to see us do as a body, you know, the council, is to, I mean, I know there are a number of groups in the community that work on racial justice issues. And I would love to have, you know, CQ Strategies or other, you know, cultural competency groups, you know, do that work for the councils as well, to put that on the radar. But also, just wanted, I'd love to start the conversation as to, how do we invite groups that are doing racial justice work in our community, highlight for us how their experiences are different and what we can be doing about those things? I mean, I know, as a teacher, hearing about those experiences has really made me think about my curriculum in new ways, and it's been really helpful. So, and I would love to see us, like, again, as Kathy said, we don't know what we don't know about how that is experienced by people of color in our community, or, I guess, how our city systems are experienced differently by people of color. So, just want to put that out there, love to start that dialogue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm just the secretary up here, but my friends all over the country are talking about this. So, outside the school, I mean, you all have, the students have done a great job, I think, reminding, if I can be blunt, reminding white America that not everything is about us and how black and brown communities and groups choose to express their experiences and their concerns is never subject to our approval. So, thank you.
One other thing. You know, as Justin said, you know, the first and highest thanks is to the students, but I also just want to acknowledge the school board and their risk-taking to approve the flying of the Black Lives Matter flag, because I know that is effectively their jurisdiction to do that, and that was, they've caught some flak for that, too.
Okay. Donna?
Can I make a motion?
Please.
That we adopt the resolution to, of course? I'm not going to read the whole thing.
I don't think we need to, but, I mean, it's up to you, but, thanks.
I would prefer we do.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Sure.
On February 1, 2018, a Black Lives Matter flag was raised at Montpelier High School to fly for the month of February. The Montpelier School Board approved the request for the Montpelier High School students of the Racial Justice Alliance to fly, raise the flag. The school board stated they are committed to making our schools inclusive, to combating institutional racism, and to work towards equality for every student. At the flag raising, students spoke out about prejudice and racism in our schools and our community. And whereas students have spoke out about prejudice and racism experienced in our schools and our community, and whereas Montpelier prides itself in being an inclusive, welcoming community, and be it resolved that the Montpelier City Council supports the Montpelier schools in their raising of the Black Lives Matter flag, be it further resolved that the Montpelier City Council rejects all forms of racism, bigotry, and hate, and seeks to work together to combat these issues in our community, and be it further resolved that the Montpelier City Council is committed to inclusion and equality as the foundation of our community and encourage residents to support this commitment. Signing by the majority of the councils, it will signify going forth with the above.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. And so, take that, a motion?
Yeah, motion.
Approved, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So, I just wanted to mention that while I want us as a council to be really open if people of color or other minorities want to share their experience with us about what it's different, how different it is to live in our community, I don't want to put that burden on them to express that to us. It's, that's a further hardship to put on that community. And so, it's incumbent on us to do that work ourselves. And of course, if folks want to share their experience with us, that's always open and always welcome, but that we're not relying on people saying, "Hey, this is a problem" in order for us to see that, that we're seeking that out. So.
Thank you, Rosie. Further discussion? All right. Very none on favor, please, the act?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all very much.
If I could. If I could just have one?
Of course, yeah.
So, I would just like to say thank you to all of you. It means a great deal when you're, this has been quite an experience for all of us, and I'd like to thank the students again for their leadership. And when you are experiencing the vulnerability that our students with far less privilege than what I've grown up with and lived with, experience it on a regular basis, but when you experience that firsthand and some of the hate that goes along with that, being lifted up by a community means a great deal to me personally. And I just personally want to thank the people of Montpelier, that when there was vulnerability and hate coming at our high school and at our community, they stood up with love and strength in their voices. And I want to thank this city council and all the people of Montpelier for their solidarity and their support. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next item, number nine, continuation of our discussion about the sprinkler ordinance. So, I guess we're on the, yeah, second reading, and we, when we adjourned, we had a motion that was pending by Counselor Olson, and I think she wanted to modify that. So, Jean, I'll call on you.
Yes, thank you. We laid my motion to repeal the current sprinkler ordinance on the table at our most recent meeting, and I now move to take it up. Further, I intend to clarify my motion by saying it is not my intention to repeal the entire ordinance, but to repeal the requirement to sprinkle new one- and two-family homes.
Okay. So, with that objection, I would propose that we substitute Jean's motion that she just described for the one that is pending when we last adjourned.
So, just to clarify, this would be the amendments that the ordinance, that the committee proposed, unless the section that says one- and two-family homes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's the pending motion. Now, I don't, was that seconded, John, do we, oh?
It was.
It was, yeah. So, we were, okay, so we're on discussion regarding that motion now. And just?
Were there other process questions, John, that you wanted to address that are relevant at this point, in terms of how to proceed?
Now, the chair, without objection, ruled that the motion was amended, so, no objection ever.
Okay. Comments, questions? Yes, Rosie?
So, I just wanted to address, Ashley, Counselor Hill was not able to be here tonight for a medical reason, but I did check in with her because she had expressed at the last meeting that she was still formulating an opinion. And she said that, basically, she agreed with the proposal that Jean just put on the table, that agreed with the amendments that the ordinance committee had proposed, but would like to strike the one- and two-family section. So, just wanted to pass on those comments on behalf of counsel.
Thank you, Rosie. All right. So, we probably have, I know you folks probably want to comment, anybody from the council, and then the public. So, I guess in no particular order, do you want to go first, Bob?
I think the staff members would like to make a just brief shot at it.
All right.
Well, and we will make it brief.
Okay.
We'll try to. Just a reminder, because at 10, or 10:10, the U.S. Women's Hockey Team has a very important game tonight versus Canada.
All right.
And that game is live on NSNBC, 10 o'clock, U.S. versus Canada.
Montpelier native, Amanda Pelkey.
Right. So, we do need to be home by 10.
The school may have their Black Lives Matter flag, but we've got the Olympic flag.
Right. We have the Olympic flag, so. All right. So, I handed, I want to talk, Chris and I both want to talk strictly about the one- and two-family piece tonight. I handed out some information tonight to everybody from, most of that came directly from the NFPA. And we'll just quickly go through it. I, you know, I don't need to read it all word for word. You know, the gist of it is there. The NFPA did a survey on the five-year period from 2011 to 2016. And you can see there are almost 400,000 home fires, 350,000 of those didn't have sprinklers. I think what stands out in there, though, is that in those fires, there were 2,600 civilian fire deaths, 13,000 civilian injuries, 7.2 billion in direct property damage, and 25,600 firefighter injuries at the fire ground in those years. And those were just at, at single-family home fires. You go down, you know, sprinklers reduce, I went through this last week, reduce the death, the risk of dying in a home fire by 80%. Working smoke detectors alone reduce the risk of dying in a home fire by 50%. And in a few minutes, Chris is going to talk about what working smoke detectors, because we're not seeing working smoke detectors. Sprinklers are responsible for 65% reduction in firefighter injuries. And keep it in mind, this is all in one- and two-family homes. Sprinklers reduce the average property loss per home by 70%. Sprinklers reduce civilian fire injuries, medical costs by 53%. The numbers are there. The information is there. 2008 underwriters laboratory study found, you know, fire, because of the synthetic construction of today's home furnishings, larger homes, open spaces, increased fuel loads that fast to fire propagation, meaning that from when it first starts to it grows into that incipient stage much quicker, shorter time to flash over, rapid change in fire dynamics, shorter escape time, shorter time of building collapse. And on cost quickly, the average cost for a sprinkler in Montpelier is about $8,200. Those aren't numbers we made up. Those are real numbers. Chris will go through in a few minutes how we came up with those numbers. He came up with those using actual permits. And if all that isn't enough, in safety, there's incentives. In Montpelier, we're offered 10% reduction in the municipal portion of your tax obligation on a fully sprinkled property. And the ISO, the ISO is an independent insurance organization that does assessments. They do, they assess the city of Montpelier. We get a rating every five years. They come in and they do a rating for us. They did an assessment report, and they found insurance discounts, and this is nationwide, ranging in 0% to 12%, with an average of 7%. So, you know, and then there's the other fact sheets to go with it. I'm not going to go through all those with you. What I would like to do, though, is just stop real quickly, and we have a video, very short, put out by the NFPA. It's three minutes, three and a half minutes, but it's pretty compelling.
It's interesting, that's, I believe, the image that's on the screen. It's right there, I just don't know why it's not showing. Source on the device. It's still not showing on the screen, though.
You know what? No? Okay. Well, it was a really good video.
Maybe you could act it out, of course.
It was, it was a demonstration of two identical rooms, 10 by 10, built at the laboratory, furnished exactly the same, same exact furniture, same exact stuffed animals, and they lit one on the right on fire. It was not sprinkled, and you can see how rapidly the fire builds. It goes to flash over, and then the fire department comes in and puts it out. The second one is sprinkled, and, boy, I wish I had the time. Within, you know, a minute to a minute and a half, the fire was completely extinguished. There was no destruction in the room. There was no, it's a very good video. I wish we had it, but we don't, so.
Can you send us the link? Yeah?
Yeah, I can. We'll send it out, sure. All right. So, I'm going to let Chris talk a little bit, and then I'll finish up with a couple quick things, and.
Sure. So, the average cost of sprinklers, Chief alluded to it, it's around $8,200. And that was a sample of 14, 14 fairly recent projects, single-family homes, and the cost of the sprinkler as reported on the certification form that's submitted at the end of the project. The most expensive sprinkler system of those 14 was $10,850. The least expensive was $4,500. And let me see, one, two, three, four, five. Five of those sprinkler systems, I believe that cost included the cost of a pump and tank because they didn't have an adequate water system. The pump and tank adds about $2,000 to the cost of a sprinkler system. So, that's kind of where those numbers came from. Local historical data. Chief also mentioned working smoke alarms. So, in the course of my job, people will renovate a bathroom or do a smaller project in their home. When I'm in their homes, I do my very best to take that opportunity to review their smoke alarms and make sure they've got good working smoke alarms. And it's, it's surprising to me, the number of homes, people who are our friends and neighbors and intelligent professional people, you go in these homes and the smoke alarms are down. There's wires hanging out of the box where the smoke alarm should be, the smoke alarm that if it works, would give early warning to get these people up and out of their houses. And I'll ask them, "Where's your smoke alarm?" "Well, you know, it was chirping, or maybe it needed a battery, or it's malfunctioning. So, we took it down, and we were going to put it right back up." And, you know, a month has passed since that's happened. It's frightening to see that. So, the smoke alarms do provide early warning when they're in place, when they're functioning properly, and they're maintained, but that's not what we always find, and I'm sure the chief has similar stories from the duty crews going out for various calls. And one, one other thing I'd like to share with you, I have, have an email from a local builder who has very recently built a house in Montpelier. I'll just, I'll just read it to you. "My name is Will Shabom, and I'm a general contractor here in town. I built my own home last winter on North Street and moved in in March. Having recently gone through the process of having to install a sprinkler in my home, here are my thoughts. Would I have installed one if I hadn't been forced to? Hard to say, but now that I have one, I feel pretty good knowing that my home is safe from fire and not dependent on anything other than the city water system maintaining adequate pressure. I have a challenging driveway that could be potentially tricky for fire trucks at certain times of the year. My house is also fairly far away from the street at an uphill incline, so there's another reason the sprinkler makes sense. In terms of cost, to sprinkle my entire house, just over 2,000 square feet, cost only $6,000. I don't know where the sprinkler costs quotes of $30,000..." are coming from. The cost of having a sprinkler certainly didn't prohibit me from building my house. All in all, my thoughts in regards to the ordinance is that it shouldn't be some carpet policy that is black and white. It seems that it should be on a case-by-case basis. Certain factors such as proximity to other buildings, fire vehicle access, water pressure, town water or well, number of dwelling units, et cetera, et cetera. Pretty much what I would have said in person." That's what I have to add to the discussion. Thank you for talking.
All right, just a couple of other things. Just want to clarify, one, that Montpelier is not, we keep hearing Montpelier is the only community in Vermont with a residential sprinkler ordinance. We are not. The town of Hartford has a residential one- and two-family sprinkler ordinance, and it also includes parts of Queche. It's a little different than ours. It's enforced through the planning and zoning department. And the way their sprinkler, so it's not in ordinance. It's in their planning and zoning. The way that works is if you build a house in Hartford or Queche, and you're more than 500 feet from the nearest hydrant, you have two choices. You can either install your own hydrant, attach to a 3,500-gallon underground tank, so you build in your own. You can get a variance from that, and the variance is that you sprinkle your home. So the variance for not putting in your own hydrant is you sprinkle a home. Theirs, it's not in ordinance, but it's been in effect for 18 years, and there are 100 homes, the Fire Chief talked to this week, there's about 100 homes in Norwich and Queche that are sprinkled. So it's not something new to Mont... We're not... So I thought that was important. And then I just want to point out, on the federal tax reform, I think I sent that to everybody. I even highlighted it. And if we look down in the costs recovery section, it clearly states, "Under new law, any sprinkler system installed after September 27, '17, in either a commercial or residential structure until December 31st will be, you know, fully expensed." That's what the tax reform says. I've been in a number of discussions recently, including today, with a gentleman by the name of Jeff Howard. Jeff is from the NFPA. He's out in Kansas City, and he's a sprinkler administrator. He cannot, you know, I'm here to tell you tonight, he cannot say for sure that that is going to cover single-family homes. So we want to make sure everyone knows that. There's a lot of question about it. You know, as we all know, this tax reform was probably, there were probably many promises made throughout the process of putting that together that will never come to fruition. It does say residential. The NFPA is saying that may not include single-family homes. That would be a huge undertaking. And when it was, when that legislation was worded, they probably, he said they probably didn't realize what they were saying. It's still up in the air. It may, it may not, but tonight I can't sit here and tell you that single-family homes will be falling to this, because they may not.
Okay. Any questions for Bob or Chris? Okay, comments? So, for the public.
Actually, can I ask, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Something that I, so I guess we're just talking about single-family homes right now, but something that I found extremely helpful during our process was when you discussed how our ordinance was different from the state with regard to public buildings, not just single-family homes. So we don't have to do it right now, but we knew on this grant of thought, but I would like to have Chris explain that to the rest of the council before we finish tonight, just because that was really illuminating. I don't know.
Now... I'm sorry. You asked for something on this topic tonight, then now would be the time.
First, we should continue on the one- and two-family homes, but then I want to put a please marker in there to talk about public buildings as well.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Sandy, did you want to comment?
Thank you for taking public comments on this. I hear a lot of people have suggested... Can you hear me? All right. My name is Sandy Bitts, whom I live on Loomis Street. I've been a resident for 25 years. I own a multifamily historic dwelling that's 175 years old. And the last unit that went in there was about tied two years ago, that Chris helped me with. And I'm also an architect. I've been practicing in Montpelier for 25 years, so I remember when this ordinance was passed. The first thing I want to say is that we have an excellent team of first responders. And the last thing I would want to do is put some additional harm. That's a really serious concern, as well as the welfare of our families in Montpelier. We also have an excellent building department. And when I was working on my own house, converting it from two to kind of two and a half years, Chris was extremely accommodating. And in fact, I worked with him and the state to figure out how to make it work in my house. I do not have sprinklers in my house. I want to point out, with my professional background and personal experience, a couple of things, and they're not meant to in any way downplay the importance of what we already have in place. Just want to offer a couple of different perspectives on some of these facets of this issue. I find the other measures that are in different ordinances, building codes, to be extremely useful for saving lives. And the most important one is without a doubt, smoke detectors. Right after that, carbon monoxide detectors. And if they can be hardwired, that's really important. I am guilty of leaving detectors without batteries for a month or two till I went to the store. And I was immediately bugged a few months ago by my hard-wired detector down in the basement, letting me know that the dust in the basement could cause it to not function anymore. And I wasn't going to be able to sleep that night until I fixed it. I think hardwiring is probably one of the most important things that we can do. The other thing is to force that there are two exits from basically every area of a home where people sleep. The deaths that did happen in recent history were because a couple got stuck down in the basement, and the stairs out were the only exit, and they couldn't get to the stairs. Bedrooms, windows, so forth. So these other measures are definitely enhanced by sprinklers, but in the balance of things, I'd like to stick keep in mind that these other measures, I think, add up to a lot in itself. I briefly want to point out that my oldest son nearly died in a college dorm. We call it Smolder, Alex. Freshman year, three boys were sleeping in the room. One drunk roommate somehow ignited his pillow, and it smoldered. He threw it off his bed onto the floor. It smoldered for over an hour, and they almost died. That room happened to not have smoke detectors working, and it didn't set off the sprinklers because there wasn't enough heat. So thank heavens, one of the boys happened to wake up, and they threw the pillow outdoors, and it spontaneously combusted. The school was never investigated for not having the smoke detectors, but I just want to point out, in that case, that would have been what would have saved their lives if they had functioned with the smoke detectors. I want to point out that the International Residential Code is a companion code to the National Fire, oh gosh, NFPA, National Fire Protection Administrators. And in fact, the NFPA in Vermont is dominant over the IRC. But IRC is a standard for many states in the United States, and it does not require sprinkler systems for single-family homes. I also want to point out that, so I guess I would say from a national point, it's a little bit above the norm of what's considered normal care, standard of care. And I'm sure that the Chief's statistics are more updated than mine, but when I talked to my insurance agent a few years ago, because I was trying to figure this out, there was no discount offer for having a sprinkler system. And we talked about it, and there's so many malfunctions that can happen, particularly in Vermont where you get very cold weather, that we thought that maybe it was that the potential for malfunctions could offset the potential for saved lives and saved furnishings and so forth. And in fact, one day I was in the insurance agent's office, and a woman was making a claim for her child, again, another dorm situation, where $1.6 million damage was caused by the sprinklers going off in the dorm due to popcorn and microwave. It's one point. It's a lot of damage that can happen from malfunctions. Doesn't mean that they're bad, but it's another facet of the issue. I really personally hope that we could encourage more incentives, rather than making it a regulation to have a sprinkler system in every new home, but have an incentive at the town level, city level. I think having one at the federal level would be fantastic. I'd like to see us approach it that way, rather than making it absolutely required. And the reason is, well, there are a lot of reasons, but I guess it gets down to economics. The cost of $10,000 or $8,000 can make a big difference. And when a family is deciding where to build, and they're trying to balance taxes, property taxes, frankly, I've heard from a number of people that's one of the reasons why they choose to live outside of their town, even though they know that their car expenses will be much higher, and they won't be going to such a great school, but they would choose to live outside of Montpelier. It's not, a one-time investment of $8,000 is not, you're already spending $200,000 to $300,000 on a house, but that is one factor. It's a complicated issue, and there are many nuances to it, so anyways, I just wanted to give a couple more perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other comments? Kate?
My name is Kate Stevenson. I'm a resident of Montpelier. I just wanted to, I happen to work in the building industry. I've worked with about 50 different builders as a consultant that are based all around the country, mostly in New England and Vermont. And so I just wanted to throw out that I'm really excited that the council is reconsidering the sprinkler ordinance. I think, you know, I've read through the amendments, and it's complicated, it's nuanced, and I know the committee's spent a lot of time considering all the different pieces of the ordinance. So I'm glad that hopefully something is going to change. But I guess my suggestion would be to rescind it altogether and really focus on the incentives I, as Sandy mentioned, versus having it regulated by the city. I just don't really understand why our city needs to have different rules from the rest of the state. It's complicated for builders when they're having to go by different ordinances specific to Montpelier that's different from every other place that they work. So if I have any other time to say something altogether, if nothing else, you know, several amendments will be breaking.
Thank you, Kate. Other comments? Okay.
My name is Zachary Upsher. I'm a resident of Montpelier, a single-family resident, and a 40-year-old apartment building, about 40 percent complete, on a new home construction for my family, a building contract. I've worked on, I think, three, this will be the fourth house that I've completed that has had a sprinkler system. I think that the building is apparently pretty expensive, and the cost of a sprinkler system, although it's significant one, it's probably for most people are willing to go to that end, it's not going to be a great decision. However, it does contribute to a series of challenges to the cost of building. It don't actually contribute to the physical structure or integrity of the building necessarily. There are a lot of other associated costs to building to be, in terms of connection. So I would say it contributes to many challenges that anyone has to overcome to do the project. I think that that can be intimidating for a lot of folks, the minds that I've worked with. I can't say they've been prepared for projects with sprinklers. To me, there's obviously a lot of stated benefits to having a sprinkler system. Ultimately, as the community is, it's going to go down to the cost and the benefit, and the value. I don't know how able, you know, the council members have been able to query their constituencies. I think you might find that a lot of books don't really know that this would ever exist. For me personally, I'm happy to do it. I'm probably about six weeks away from having a sprinkler system installed, a project I'm working on now. And if the ordinance is still in place, we'll certainly do it. If I didn't have to, I would not. To me, it comes down to a personal choice. For me, I would rather allocate the $7,000 to $10,000 resources towards more energy conservation, or a solar, you know, happen to solar or something like that. Those are the things we look to be. And so I would just be curious of the representative of Congress, how many of our citizens know about the way that sprinklers are, and they're wanting to, considering all the present costs of the process.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, so we have a motion pending, and just for clarity, it was a motion to adopt the proposed changes, with the exception of one- and two-family units, is that right? So it's an all-encompassing motion.
Yes, to repeal the requirement for sprinklers, one- and two-family.
But also was adopting, the proposed, proposing adopting.
Can I ask that we split those? I would prefer to vote on whether to remove the one- and two-family from the amendment, and then do a second vote on whether to adopt the amendment, whether or not we change it.
Yeah, I think that's an order. I think you can call, divide the question. Okay, is there any further discussion? If you've heard the first motion first, yes.
So I, I've got further discussion.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that, you know, on the ordinance committee, we did struggle with a lot of these issues that the public has raised, and we went through a lot of them. And I still stand behind what we presented to you. I suspect that the majority of the council is going to vote to repeal the one- and two-family exemption, and that's certainly a policy decision that we can make. I personally am not going to vote to support removing one- and two-family, although I will vote to make the total amendments, because I, one, having gone through that process and thought thoroughly about all this, but second, having a personal experience several weeks ago, where a colleague that I had worked with previously and his four-year-old son were killed in a single-family house fire as they were trying to escape. And that experience just really, you know, brought it home to me how these fires can strike anybody. And we, when you're designing a house, you're thinking about, you know, your dreams for that house and how you're going to live there, and you don't think about these sorts of situations. So that was a personal experience that I had recently, and I, because of that, can't vote to support exempting that. But pragmatically, I share the frustrations that we heard from a contractor that the ordinance, as it's currently written, is being applied inequally. And I think that an ordinance, even without the one- and two-family homes change that we have presented, is better than what's on the books currently. So just wanted to say that piece.
Other comments? Okay, nothing?
Yeah, I guess I just would add that, I mean, having heard from, you know, a developer who is grateful to have a sprinkler system in his house, I think is really, it's just really interesting, you know, that it's not all black and white, you know, as to, you know, how people feel about this. And, you know, if, for people that are spending on the scale of, you know, $4,000 to $8,000, I mean, that seems reasonable. I did talk with a friend of mine who is spending $30,000 on a sprinkler system, and that, to me, seems unreasonable. And so my hope, I mean, so I also want to take a rational approach to this process, and that one of the things that I think we, I would be very interested in seeing is as, if, I may also, I'm glad that we're separating these things out, because I'm also not going to support exempting the one- and two-family homes, but I would also vote to pass the amendment if that's what people want. But I guess, jumping back to my... But I guess jumping, jumping back to my thought here, I feel like, I have lost my train of thought. So maybe I'll leave it there. Right, oh, right. The, because this amendment does have cost provisions as grounds for exemption, my hope is that that works. And if it doesn't work, then that means the amendment hasn't worked, and then it's worth taking up again. So I, I would really like to monitor how the, how that, how that goes and, you know, if someone's needing to spend $30,000 on a sprinkler system, I would, I would hope that they would get, you know, a variance to not have one. So, yeah, let's, let's keep watching it. I don't, I mean, I've had more conversations about sprinklers than I thought I would ever have in my life because of this. And I also want to acknowledge that we might not be done with this, and that's okay. I'm, I'm interested to see how well this works. And if it doesn't work, let's take it up again.
Further discussion? All right, here then, we're voting on the motion by Councilor Olson, remove, I'm sorry, single two-unit dwellings.
Just for sake of clarity, there's this, there's this one section that says new one or two family dwellings, and that is what would be struck, everything else would stay. I mean, I know you're only voting on the first part right now, but just.
Including the exempt structures, that part, so in part, I was thinking that if you take out the, the one and two family homes, the exempt structures almost doesn't make...
It does.
Do you think it makes sense? Okay. Is that something that?
Is there a question? Did you want to raise a question? No, we're voting, you're voting on, right now, to repeal, remove the requirement for sprinkling for, clearly for one and two family dwellings.
You want to say something?
No, I think that's great.
Okay, great. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so votes three, two, and that passes, and the motion is...
It's a four.
You gotta have...
Oh, we have four, okay, so I vote, I vote aye as well. Forget that, it's four votes. Second, now, you can probably tell I've been, brain's a little fogged. Recovering from the flu here, so we're dealing with, now we have the underlying motion to, which is proposed to, is proposed by the committee. Actually, she was, it was part of it, so we just divide, we divided it, so...
We bifurcated it.
Part of Jean's original motion. Right, so now we're on the second.
The same...
They need to state it.
Oh, no, we're not voting it at the same time, but it's...
No, but I mean, but it's parliamentary speaking, it's two different motions, so I'm just making sure that then it's got the same first and second. It sounds like this one should be.
Okay. Everybody understand where you are? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Actually, is there time for discussion on this?
Yes, sure.
Because now we're talking generally about the work that this committee has done with the removal of single and two-family homes. I wanted to follow up on a point that Counselor Watson made, which is specifically towards the end of the document in section 201-5A, which covers variances. And in reading this, number three, unreasonable cost burden, stuck out to me, because what does that mean? Part of what we've struggled with in the Building Code Committee previously was a certain amount of ambiguity over how we should implement the rules that were before us, and so it seems to me it would make sense to provide as much clarity as possible, if it's appropriate, to help maybe define that. And it sounds like there may be more work to be done on this in the future, but since we have it open now, I'm going to take a stab at it. In talking to a developer, there were a couple of things that came up in terms of the cost of these systems. The first is adequate water pressure, and that is addressed further down in number four, also in variances. And I guess it would help me to have a little bit more information about what is the PSI or the metric by which where sprinkler systems function properly?
It's, it's actually volume and not pressure.
Okay.
And that's where we, and there are some issues in the city where there's not enough volume. So we have plenty of pressure in the city. There's areas where we don't have enough, because of old, Harrison Avenue was a perfect example. Until this past summer, when they put in the new water line, there was not enough volume there, and so...
What is that volume? They throw out 3500 gallons, or what is the volume?
It depends entirely on the...
Number of square footage?
Not just square footage, but contents of the building, design of the sprinkler system, pipe lengths, it's, there's, sprinkler systems are hydraulically calculated and they're based on a certain amount of water hitting the floor at all locations, and effectively that means you start building the system at the very end. You have to supply the right amount of water to the very end of it and backtrack that all the way to the beginning. So there's not one number there.
So if I'm understanding correctly, there's both the volume and pressure that's coming out of the city supply line, and then the system itself within the house, based on square footage, length of pipe, et cetera, et cetera. Is that more or less covered?
But to be clear, my, my understanding is that the council has struck the one and two family sprinkler requirement. So now we're talking about commercial sprinklers, which is an NFPA 13 system, which requires significantly more water than a single-family home.
Sure.
If you ask me the question about a single-family home, I'd say 35, 35 gallons per minute is how much, how much a single-family home sprinkler typically requires.
More for, depending on the structure, so I guess...
Much, much more.
Kind of where I'm going with this is, who will be making that determination of adequate city water supply based on all those variables?
Well, when a, when a sprinkler system is designed, public works flows, flows water from the two hydrants closest to, closest to where that sprinkler system is going to be connected, and that's going to determine what, what city water we have supplied at that location. That's not, that's not saying that's supplied into the building, it's what's in the street in front of that property.
So DPW will conduct tests and then report back in the permitting process as to whether there is sufficient fire suppression.
The sprinkler designer reviews that information.
On site. Okay, that's helpful, I think, for whoever on Building Code ends up trying to help make these rulings in a fair and predictable way. And that brings us back to unreasonable cost burden. So, you know, we've thrown out the number 4,000, 10,000, 30,000, there's, there's some spectrum of what this council might perceive as acceptable, and of course, the majority of anything above 10,000 is when you get into insufficient supply, and then you need pressure tanks and reserves on site to help ensure that there is adequate water to put out the fire. And I'm curious if there's any tolerance in council to try to quantify that, perhaps with a cost per square foot of development, because obviously, as Chris referenced, the size of the building and the number of floors of living space would contribute to the amount of sprinkling that it needs and thus the cost of the system.
I'd like to respond to that. We did discuss in the committee trying to make these variance criteria more specific, and we did start to go down that road, and then we really kind of took a step back and realized that looking at the variances that the variance committee has granted over the past few years, regardless of whether they should have been granted or not under that previous ordinance, there were so many different factors going into whether or not it was a reasonable cause. And the thing that really springs to mind, especially now that we're just talking about public buildings, we're not talking about single-family homes, is when the homeless shelter was being proposed for the church this past fall. And that was a situation where they weren't actually doing a whole lot of construction, it was really a change-of-view situation, and they counted it as a hotel. And so technically, you know, we would, for a normal hotel, of course, we would want a sprinkler system. But, you know, I sat on the variance committee with you, and even though we didn't have a clear path in the ordinance to exempt them, we did not want to have the sprinkler requirement be the one thing to stand in the way of us having a homeless shelter in Montpelier. That just did not seem to be the intention, and so we granted them a, a one-year variance with the knowledge that we were working on this and would have something going forward. So in that situation, even a very low-cost burden, even a very low cost per square footage, would have been unreasonable for that situation. If somebody was putting in a brand-new hotel, then we would be considering a much higher cost per square foot as reasonable or unreasonable. And so, you know, this council appoints the members of the sprinkler variance committee, and to some extent, you know, we have to give them the tools to figure this out and make that determination, and that was where the committee ended up in leaving it a little variable there.
Sure, I appreciate that it was discussed, and also that certainly there is a place for some level of ambiguity. I guess I just kind of wanted to test the waters in terms of, you know, does that mean that if someone has more or less money when they start their construction project, if that would impact that decision or the number of square footage of the house? I mean, could they just build, if they build a smaller house? I mean, we're...
The house will be included now.
Or a building, a residential multifamily unit, maybe?
Which is probably going to fall under state.
Fall under the state.
And our ordinance.
Keep in mind now that we're removing the single one and two-family homes, most of the projects are going to fall under the state now. The hotels, and I, three or more units, and a residential falls to the state.
So if we go back a little bit then in the document to just before one and two-family dwellings in terms of new multifamily buildings, in saying that the state would cover those, that's purely, clearly stated here in the first part of the sentence, "in addition to the provisions of the Vermont Fire and Building Safety Code," and it goes on to say, in what we're preparing to consider approval for, "an approved automatic sprinkler system must be installed in resident occupancies up to and including four stories in height and in accordance with NFPA 13R." Is that a more stringent requirement than state requirements?
Yes, it is, yeah.
So, so even though state law would apply, we're now proposing a...
It can, it can be.
An ordinance that potentially is, is a greater burden to a developer.
That's one of the windows of areas that a variance could be considered.
I would like to suggest, just looking at this exempt structures and how we've structured it, given that the council has expressed a preference to remove one and two family, it probably makes sense to add one and two family dwellings as a line under exempt structures just so that there's no ambiguity that would make this clearer. I'm not going to make that motion, but if somebody would like to make that motion, that would make your ordinance sit.
I guess my intent in raising this is just to make sure that we're getting this right, if we're, have, you know, variances one through four with things like low-risk occupancy, alternative compliance measures, unreasonable cost burden, and inadequate city, city water. There's a lot of ways to get out of this if you wanted, if you met these criteria as determined by this rather subjective body. That was my only point in raising this.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, here then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all for your work on this issue.
We've all lost energy, we cannot open our mouths, John.
Okay, your next and final item is the discussion of the Taylor Street Art Project.
Beauty at last.
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you, Chris.
Welcome. So we have two members of the committee, Nathan Suter and Jill Praley, and then Paul Gamble, who has been responsible for organizing this process and running the city's grant. So welcome, both of you, and Jill.
It's been a pleasure to spend this evening with you.
Happy Valentine's Day.
I was going to remind you, you can watch on TV.
Happy to be at the roundtable. Thank you. We're excited to be here at this moment. I'm just going to give a very short introduction, and it has not escaped me that on this special day, Montpelier wakes up and celebrates a very precious expression of public art that has become renowned as a part of our identity in Montpelier all over the country. People know about Phantom and its impact, and I have heard, it's in the air, that there are over 5,000 hearts this year all over Montpelier, and I want to point out also that, thrilled that somehow the Phantom and the Art Synergy Project got connected this year. And you'll notice there are 200 custom-made hearts that are love letters to Montpelier created by students at the high school and Union Elementary that somehow made it into the hands of the Phantom and into the distribution. So we're thrilled that the city, all stakeholders are celebrating the power of public art. And to just connect the dots, one more level, it really, I don't think anybody who saw the hearts taped to the flagpole and on the high school the day after the Black Lives Matter flag went up can, cannot acknowledge that that expression of art and messaging through imagery has become part of, of the actual soul of Montpelier. So this project, creating a path to annually supporting a cultural commitment to creating our identity through art should not be discounted or, I'm lost for the word here, but there's real power in what we're about to do. And, and tonight, this announcement is the very beginning of what we hope will become an annual expression of Montpelier's identity through public art. So we've had a wonderful process led by Nathan Suter, who's been chair of the committee, and I'm going to hand it over to him to tell you about that process, and then we do have a recommendation, which we'd like to discuss probably in executive session.
I want to echo Paul's appreciation for spending the evening with you, especially, this is, today's my birthday. I can't think of no better way to spend my birthday evening. My wife is very...
Happy birthday.
Putting the kids to bed by herself. Paul, I think that was a great articulation about the Valentine Bandit. The, I share Paul's appreciation for the power of art in the public space, and I love that we are chief by John with the sprinkler discussion, and I was going to make some argument that art also makes us safer. I do think that this is, Montpelier already has a unique identity, and it is already a magnet for people, both visitors and people who move here. And I think that these kinds of arguably very inexpensive choices to take a chance on investing in public art are, will be defining, are defining and will be defining further for this community. I just find it very exciting, and I applaud John Holler, the city council, Paul Gamble, and the whole team that has made the NEA grant possible, the city contribution possible. So that's exciting. In terms of running a committee that is making a, what seems like a pretty high-stakes selection happen, what we focused on, well, there was, we, there was a committee that helped draft the sort of charge or the call to artists. There was a first stage where we qualified a group of artists as finalists, and then we asked those finalists to prepare specific proposals. And at every step of the way, our focus was on a positive process where the members of the committee were voicing affirmative and appreciative comments about what they, what they found inspiring, what they found valuable, what they found moving in the artists themselves or then later on in the art proposals. And by that approach, we really attempt to keep, attempted to keep the process positive and affirmative, and I think the results, both in terms of the finalists, were quite inspiring, and then the recommendation we have from the city council, I'm tremendously excited about, and, and I think that for the time being, we've sadly left some really great ideas, you know, on the table, and I'm excited that there's a chance that we may be able to engage with those artists and those projects in the future. Thanks, thanks for the support. I think it's, I think we're doing the city proud.
I just want to say, just as a member of the committee, it was a real, it was an honor to be part of it. It was outside the scope of anything I've done before. It was a lot of fun, and I just want to thank Nathan for the work that he did in organizing it. It was a really impressive sort of structure and the way that we went through it that led to a really good outcome, I think. So thank you, Nathan, for your work, and obviously, Paul, just for your vision and energy in kind of moving this whole thing along, so it's been a lot of fun.
It's also exciting to hear that you've got a couple other runners-up, it sounds like. We've got plenty of sites, I think, in the city that would benefit... We've got plenty of sites, I think, in the city that would benefit from more public art, and so hopefully, future councils will find a way to directly support that financially.
Well, and to, as a quick reminder, this is one part of an ongoing process. We'll be bringing suggested policies to the council for consideration. The community is involved in shaping those policies with the consultant that we've hired, thanks to the NEA grant. And we've been having community charrettes and workshops all through the fall, and there's another one coming up next week where we're testing the policies now and seeing how they fit and what kind of structure the city can adopt to have a formalized plan for advancing public art.
Okay, so I think what we need now is a motion to go into executive session and also invite-
Just to be the, the pain in the butt here, what's, what's, will be the-
Oh, I, that has not been part of my-
Premature disclosure of contract, has the audit has been notified?
I'm not sure.
I thought this had been organized with you. You have been a part of it.
So, the executive session discussion would be for the purpose of-
Can I jump in?
Yeah, I'm asking.
So the, the artist selection committee is prepared to make a recommendation to the city council. We have been made to understand that because this is not a fait accompli, the city council may wish to have the opportunity to discuss the merits of our recommendation versus other proposals in private before making a determination. Is that accurate?
Well, it's an award of a contract, so I guess, I mean, it does seem-
I'm not against it, I just want to make sure we're complying with the law.
Well, no, that's, that's all in the memo, that's all detailed in the memo.
Why don't we, why don't we pause for just a second?
Sure. I mean, the contract isn't detailed in the memo, but the process that we're proposing is detailed.
It doesn't use the word "contract" in the recommended action, but it comes down
to a contract with the artist.
It comes down to an award.
Is there a literal contract?
There will be a contract that-
$50,000 worth.
Yeah, the city, the city just-
Would premature disclosure of your recommendation in any way compromise the city's ability to change who's selected in the future?
Say that again.
Would making your recommendation known publicly tonight in any way disadvantage the city Montpelier in making the final award of that contract?
I don't believe so, in my opinion.
If it doesn't complicate the process, that really is not subject to a closed session, as I understand.
Well, um-
I'd say, what did you add then? Make your recommendation to the-
Excuse me, we wanted to executive session to consider their finalists, what's the difference? They're once again giving us potential finalists that they want to have input on so that the-
Just to be clear.
Be clear before there's a, a public announcement.
I don't have any personal problem, I just want to make sure we're hitting the, checking the right box of the-
So I'm asking, what box did we check last time when we talked about it?
Stephen is going to have it.
Just to be clear of what is, where we are right now in the process, there have been five finalists. The committee has selected a recommendation to make an award. The city will own the work, it is the city's, the committee does not have the power to make that award. If the council would like to have any discussion before the award is made, I guess that's up to you, whether you want to have that discussion in public or whether you want to hear our recommendation and anything that might be proprietary or otherwise.
You were coming in to say, here's who we've selected and the council was going to-
I would recommend, if you all do decide to go into closed session, that you explicitly make the motion under which hook you want to hang your hat on. Either it's a personnel or it's a contract, because I don't see any difference between this and when the community fund comes in and makes recommendations.
But we did it before, that's what I was asking, before when they gave us finalists, we went to executive session.
I think before it was for committee members, it wasn't for finalists.
No, it was-
An appointment.
It was for these last, these five that all brought their things, they passed, not the, yeah, these last finalists, the five finalists, we met with them in there.
Well, I can give you my perspective on this, is that if questions come up around the assessment or review of the works and the level of those works and our committee's assessment of those, in the same way that you would assess people who are applying to serve on-
The personnel?
Personnel issues, we're doing in some regard here about professional personnel issues. And I personally am uncomfortable having that discussion in public. So my recommendation to, in the process, was that this go into executive session so that we could be frank without unduly exposing-
Which is what we did for these five finalists, we talked. So I'd make a motion, we go into executive session, considering that the relationship to the artists with their works is like a personnel issue.
I might want a second, but I have a qualifying question. I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate without a second to let that die. Has the work already been created?
I think I'd like to do this unless you do. I could spend a little bit more time working on it.
Then why did we do it before?
I can remember.
We did it in a-
It was appointment, I'm pretty sure.
No, it was these five, it was these five, like, we, we discussed who was going to be the last five finalists, and now we're trying to decide who's going to be the one.
I'm sorry, I just don't remember doing that.
Do you remember what agenda was at March?
Sorry, we were conferring while you were conferring. Do you want to bring me up to speed on what you were just asking?
When we met to hear your input of the five finalists, we met in executive session, do you remember when that was?
Here are the categories for going into executive session. Negotiating or securing real estate purchase or lease options, no. The appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, but they must make the final decision in an open meeting. A disciplinary or dismissal action against a public officer or employee. A clear and imminent peril to the public safety. Discussion or consideration of records or documents that are exempt from public records, laws, et cetera. Those are the ones that, and municipal or school security emergency response measures. Those are all the ones that you can just go in. Then there are another group where you have to have a finding that premature disclosure puts the public body, the public at a substantial disadvantage. Those are contracts, labor negotiations agreements with employees, arbitration or mediation, grievances, binding and probable civils, pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution, confidential attorney-client communications made for. So my non-legal opinion would be contracts would be the only one that this would-
Yeah, and I think the problem with that one is that if we don't meet the requirement that premature public knowledge would place the public body at a substantial disadvantage. I mean, I just don't, so I guess, unless folks feel strongly, I think we should-
Well, it's a, I mean, it's a fixed contract.
There's no negotiation.
It's not like, they're not asking, there's no one asking for more commission and we're not offering less, so there's not-
And that's really not the purpose of the executive session in any way.
We're not talking about negotiation.
I would just add, the reason I asked if the art had been created or not is because, in essence, we're going to hire someone for $50,000 to create a piece of art. And even though we haven't hired the other four people, effectively, we're dismissing them from this process.
We're also asking, hopefully, that they'll stay in the wings for the next time.
All right, so I think we had a motion, is there, was there a second?
No.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to suggest that we not go into executive session, that we just hear from the, from the board. I don't think that we meet this-
I think to assuage your concerns, just offer a suggestion, would be that you offer your recommendation and the reasons why it is your recommendation. You don't need to comment on the, unless other people who attended the sessions want to ask about others, but I, you know, I think there must be a reason why this thought choice was made. That's, then that way, you know, I think that involves, I mean, yes, you're right, the council and the city owns this, but we also appointed a committee to do this work on behalf of the council, and I can't speak for them all, but I'm assuming they're going to support the community's decision.
I'll take that as a nod to the future, as we set up the Arts Commission and empowerment of that commission. So thank you, we accept that.
Okay, so, but before we go forward, we do have a motion, and it's, I'm not sure what we do when-
I just, I want to also check in with you. I mean, given that that was not sort of how you anticipated coming into this, I mean, I would like to err on the side of having more things in open session if we can. Would you want a couple minutes to, I mean, to reorganize or, okay.
No.
And would you be okay with doing that? I mean, would you-
Oh, absolutely.
I think they're ready to go.
Okay, I just wanted to check in.
And I want to apologize, because I know you'd run this by, and I just didn't give this the attention that it deserved today, so my apologies for not thinking about this, thinking this through. All right, so did you want to go forward with the motion for executive session?
Is there a second that you can?
Okay. I'm not sure what we do if I think that it's not, well, we'll vote and then we'll go from there, but I don't-
You need four to pass.
So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How many is that? I'm sorry, could you raise your hand if you vote aye?
One.
One, all opposed?
Nay.
Okay, okay, so the motion fails. Now, let's go to the main event here, so.
After careful consideration of five candidates or artist teams, the artist selection committee respectfully submits a recommendation of Rodrigo Nava and Greg Gomez, an artist team based in Putney, for their proposal, which is called-
Counter.
Working titled Counter-Rotation. The proposal, with, with an amendment, or with a, uh-
Please.
With a proposed modification to, what's that?
Counter-Rotation.
Counter-Rotation is the working title. The concept of the piece-
It's one of the seats.
The concept of the piece is based on a millstone, so it, there are pieces, there are parts of the piece that reference the history of the site and the history of the junction of the two rivers. The, they reference the form of a gristmill stone in a much larger disc that is cast concrete, and it is, it can be rotated, not quickly, like a merry, like a merry-go-round, but slowly. And this piece is, will serve both as a bench and as an interactive piece, and it has a counter on it, and that counter is attached to, is connected to a flip, what do we call it?
Split.
A split, split flap counter or a Solari board. So if you've been to Penn Station in New York City or many transportation hubs where the destination board and the timing of arrivals and departures would go ch 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 and display a new, you got it. Councilperson Justin Turkot is displaying the example there. So the, the Solari board or the, or the flip, split flap board would be mounted indoors in the waiting area, likely to be visible even from the outside. The initial proposal was to install this piece indoors in the indoor area, and it was the strong and unanimous recommendation of the committee that the, this offer or this recommendation we made to the city council and communicated to the artists that, provided they are willing to install the grist stone, the grinding stone, bench piece outdoors in a site that has been identified by the architect on the project, then we wholeheartedly support their proposal. And the force behind that recommendation is that there was shared belief on the part of the committee that making this piece of art as accessible as possible at all hours of the day to the public was a major priority. And we believe from our understanding of the technical details that that's possible and would not affect the durability or the experience of the artwork. And so, to be clear, the recommendation is that the city council award this arts commission to Rodrigo Nava and Greg Gomez from Putney, Vermont, on the condition that they install this interactive seating disc in an outdoor space that has been identified by Gossens Bachmann, who's the architect of the project.
Questions, Justin?
This is really exciting, what an interesting piece of art. And will it be a real grist, like a original, or it's going to be created by the artist?
Original, created by the, not, sorry, not an original gristmill, it's going to be cast concrete, or that's what they're projecting, I'm sure that they'll consider other materials. It's much bigger, I think, than any stone that I am aware of. So it's, it's referential, but it is not, it's not an actual artifact, nor is it-
Understand. Is the counter going to click off every time it gets pushed in a circle?
So the details are quite interesting. The, the split flap counter has 26 character slots, and the split flap drums, for lack of a better term, can be loaded with Roman numerals, you know, numbers in, in sort of multiple languages, it can be loaded with letters, things like that. And so it provides an opportunity for ongoing community engagement where that can be programmed differently, it could display haiku, but it, but it will, part of the component is, as the artists intended, is that it will keep track of how many rotations that, that rotating bench has made over the course of its lifetime, and-
Counter-clockwise.
Right, so they, they stipulated in their proposal that the rotation would happen in a counterclockwise fashion, because as they, as they stated, sometimes it's important to go the other way.
Will it count backwards then if you go clockwise?
It will not.
It won't go clockwise.
It will not go clockwise, yeah.
And will that counter be located at the same site as the seat?
No, as I stated, the-
Inside.
The split flap chart will be mounted likely indoors, I think partly to protect it from weather, but also that connects the indoor and the outdoor space. Because of the glass in the design of the waiting room area, our understanding is that it should be visible to people even outside, though it is inside.
And there would be some sort of signage, or the artist is going, would prefer to create some sort of a statement that explains what that counter is to said layperson?
Correct. And a big part of the, the split flap is the sound it makes, you know, as the message is being made. So if it is indoors, there'll be a speaker outdoors so that when it turns, you'll hear the, you'll be able to watch and hear the sense of the interaction.
And I assume this, the answer to this quite, final question, but because it's not a real gristmill, people can't actually grind anything in it if they turn it?
Correct.
No, no, it's safe, they can't get fingers or feet.
How loud, I'm just thinking, we do, we are going to have residents on that site, if somebody decides to spin this thing in the middle of the night, it won't be that loud, okay.
Yeah, so they're, they are, they have referenced bearing systems that are used, I'm trying to remember the other context, the industry from which they're drawing those, but this is not a, the object itself is not noisy.
I didn't mean, see, I was talking about the counter.
The split flap counter-
See, it was going to have a speaker and-
Oh, well, if it is electronically connected via, to a speaker, that is certainly something that can be modulated.
Probably shut off timers, yeah.
And it's, this is a case where the city is, the city is the owner of that piece of art, and so should you wish to turn it down from 11 to, say, six on volume dial?
Love it is one better.
Any other questions? Done.
I'm sorry you disagree with the committee. This was my third choice, having seen all of them. I really love the Stormwater Garden and the whole reshaping out front and using colored tile to take people into the river. And I also loved the first one, that was not only interactive, it changes from every position, the sculpture, but he was offering an opportunity for incredible, and he was the first one to speak, and the only one I felt really prepared for community interaction of the creation of his sculpture. So that's my bias. I would have put either one of those first over this one. I'm glad you moved it outside.
Speaking as a member of the committee, we were really excited about most of these proposals or aspects of each of them, and my understanding is that councilperson Badi, you will remain on the city council, and I look forward to your support for public art commissions in the future.
Oh, yeah, I want to go buy one of those, I just, they're beautiful.
Sounds like we've got a strong list of runners-up that we can support in the future.
Any of these would have been exciting.
Other questions?
I would make a motion.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I would move to accept the committee's recommendation and move forward with the process of commissioning this artwork.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would just also like to note, I would not be psyched to have a speaker outside with the flappy noise. Just begging that, put, put that up there.
I'm sure that there will be plenty of discussion about the installation and creation of this, and this artwork. Okay, any further discussion? You're down, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
I can't.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for all your work.
I'll close it. Oh, no, no. No, I'm just horrible.
Done, it's an opportunity- Donna, it's an opportunity for us to fund more art in the future.
Yes.
Thank you for your work.
Quickly.
Okay. Other business, let's see. Council reports. Oh, yeah, we need scheduled meeting. Let's do that.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for attending.
So, the, I'm just going to throw this out, the only, really, the only night next week I could meet is Monday. So, I have time during the day on Monday.
Monday's the holiday.
That's a problem.
I can do Thursday.
What is, what is that? President's Day? Is that what it is?
I can't do anything until Thursday. I can do anything except Monday.
Yeah, let's do that. That's, I think, a better way to do it.
But it would be good to know because...
We're not, we're postponing it for attendance. And if we can't all be there, then we're passing up the opportunity tonight to speak, right?
So, I could do pretty much any day that week? I can make time as a priority for me?
Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense if there was really, it's going to be impossible to get anyone in.
I'm going to clear my schedule to whatever works for the bodies, so.
I would simply, for me, Tuesday night, we have the, I was going to do it on the report, but we have the DRB.
Parks Commission. I can't do it Tuesday.
Parks Commission, but also the DRB is meeting about the Moat and One Taylor and the hotel and DRC. So, I'm going to be here representing the city on that side. That's a conflict for me, but the other nights, I couldn't even do the holiday.
I'm not going to be able to do it at, anyway, that's, so, we'll pursue it.
You could do a holiday.
Rosie said she couldn't.
I can't Monday or Tuesday.
Monday or Tuesday.
So, when are you gone again? I can't do it till Thursday.
I'm gone starting the following weekend.
I could do it Thursday or Friday.
Wednesday's still warm for me.
So, Wednesday and, Wednesday is out for people, the 21st?
I'm out of town on the 21st.
Well, I could do it before 6:30, so I could do it like five and...
I'm out of town on the 21st. I'm not back in town till Thursday.
Twenty-second.
Thursday.
Can't do it Thursday.
Can't do it Thursday at all.
I think I, I could do later on Thursday.
Friday.
Well, we'll try to.
Friday.
Friday I could do.
We have something.
I could do Friday.
I have something, 3:30 to 4:30 Friday, but after that...
Right, yeah, I could do more, because even...
4:30 on Friday.
Sort of done by then, she would...
She can't do four, you're out there.
Yeah, I can't do that. Yeah.
She can't do the 3:30.
All right.
Do daytimes work at all for folks?
Well, I think Donna was out until...
I can, Thursday or Friday daytime.
Do Thursday daytime? Okay, I guess we will have to doodle.
Okay. Well, we will see what we can do.
Well, we have to do some, the contract says that we have to do something by March first, so...
Can't do it, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I can't do it tonight.
I understand that, but we have, no.
Well, I think what it might just mean is that maybe everybody can't be there and...
And that we have a hard deadline.
The next week, you're gone, the 27th, 28th. Oh, you're gone.
Not maybe, yeah, Bill's gone.
Okay.
Okay. Council reports. Rosie.
Nothing to report. I'll pass.
Well, I just wanted to bring up, you all may have gotten this from the league, about a workshop in March 24th, and there is a deadline for early registration, but particularly for new council members, this is really...
Which one is that?
This is the one in Fairleigh, but it goes into...
Now, which, the name of it is?
Oh, the name of it, hmm. Spring Select Board Institute. But it goes into the Alvin Meeting Law, Conflicts of Interest, Clean Water, legislate, you know. Anyway, it's a, it's a good one to kick off. And I definitely want to thank the Valentine Bandit Helpers. It's always wonderful. And as Paul brought up, it is our, our art, and I just really appreciate it.
Pass.
Just want to give gratitude for all the love this Valentine's Day.
I'll pass.
Just a reminder that property taxes are due tomorrow.
Thank you for that sweet thought.
Sweet thought. So, I just had a couple of updates. As I just said, Tuesday night, the Moat site plan and One Taylor project is, should be getting its final permits from DRB. This is for the demolition of the buildings and adjusting the lot lines. So, that's good for those that haven't noticed, the French block is under construction, actively under construction. You can see they're doing the mitigation. And it's interesting, we did the Black Lives Matter thing tonight. I just wanted to note that in the last couple of weeks, Mayor and I attended an event on, for every Tuesday night, there's a Spanish speakers that meet at, at Baguio's. And most of them are non-native English speakers, so they're native Spanish speakers from different countries. And they held their two-year anniversary, and we were invited and got to go. And it was amazing how many different countries were represented there that are speaking in diversity. Couple of days later, I went to the, you know, the Black Lives Matter flag thing. And then last Saturday, I went to the Ghana dinner at the high school. And it, it occurred to me that, you know, 23 years ago when I moved here, none of these things would have been imaginable. And so, it's really is cool the way our community is changing, and it's appropriate that we're taking the actions that we are. And I want to end on a personal note about the Black Lives Matter and the white privilege. I've told the story to several of you, I don't know how many, but I had an experience that happened to me a few years ago. I was in Charlottesville for a conference that you all sent me to. And we, part of it was going to Monticello. And while we were there, one of my classmates was this guy named Kurt Wilson, who's the city manager in Stockton, California. He's a brilliant man, happens to be African-American, and great guy. He was there, and we were sitting there talking, and I was sitting next to another woman who was also African-American, and we were just kind of sitting there. And Kurt was going to go into the gift shop. And he turned, he pulled out a bag of Skittles from his pocket, handed it to Lisa, said, "Can you hold them for me? I'm going into the shop." She's like, "Yeah, right, got it, no problem." She goes in, came back out, she gave me Skittles back. The next day, I bought them, you know, the next day, I went up to Kurt and said, "Did I see what I think I just saw?" I said, "Did you hand those Skittles to Lisa?